Michelle, are you ready if we go?
Ready.
Carrie, all set?
Yeah, I'm just trying to unmute the people that are on this team.
Good morning, folks.
Morning.
Is there Patrick Hacon in here?
I'm not sure if Patrick was able to join us. I had him on the list just in case he'd be here.
Okay, so.
Our three main members are here.
Okay, I don't see Nick.
I'm not sure if Nick was going to be able to join us as well.
All right. Well, if you have the team that you would like, then we can start.
Yeah, we're ready to go.
Commissioner Woods.
Can I share my screen?
Good morning, everyone. Today is Monday, August 26th. This is our monthly Boston Parks and Recreation Commission Public Hearing. My name is Ryan Woods. I have the pleasure of serving as the Parks Commissioner for the City of Boston. I am joined today by Associate Commissioners Eugene Ballinger, Assistant Commissioner Jessica Pierre, Assistant Commissioner Icy Washington, our Secretary, Executive Secretary Carrie Marsh Dixon, and our Chief Landscape Architect Liza Meyer. We may have some other Associate Commissioners joining us, and we'll make sure we introduce them when they're able to join. So with that, Madam Secretary, I will pass it off to you for the first item on the agenda, please.
This is a vote to approve 273 Highland Street, which is adjacent to Marcella Playground in Roxbury.
Steve will now give it to you and the team. We just ask that you introduce yourself and let us know if you're unable to share.
About loaded up. Oh, perfect. Yeah, I'm Steve Mitchin with Studio G Architects. Gabby, you want to introduce yourself?
Carrie, can we make sure Gabriella's a co-host?
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, I couldn't unmute myself. Thanks for that. Hi, my name is Gabriella Shelburne. I'm a Principal Studio G Architects.
Ray Donnitz with RDLA.
All right, and if it's okay with you all, we can start with our presentation now. So our project is located at 273 Highland Street in the Highland Park neighborhood of Roxbury. Next slide, please. Thank you. We're within the Architectural Conservation District in Highland Park, and we are downhill and northwest from the Marcella Park. This project will have portion of the connection path that the city and the neighbors, the neighborhood ambitions to connect Highland Street to the Highland Park above, on top of the hill. Ray Donnitz was the landscape architect who designed the renovation for Highland Park, and he's part of our team. Next slide. So our project is 23 affordable units from one to up to three-bedroom units. It will be, energy efficiency will, we will strive for to be net zero. We will produce more energy than what we consume, and we will be FIES and LEED Platinum certified.
This slide shows you some neighboring context around these sites. From the top left corner, all the way down to the right corner here, you can see just a corner of the Marcella Street Park there, and what the buildings look like around the site that we'll be sharing with you today. Along with considering all the different components of the neighborhood, the massing and building heights have been respected in this development. And the materials that will clad the building are robust masonry and high-density fiber cement. The foundations, the at-grade materials are all very robust masonry. So this building is, will be clad with materials that'll last for a long time. And they have kind of an, they've observed a natural palette to fit into the neighborhood. Here you can see shadow studies that have been done for this site. Here's the site in the red. You can see the red outline around the site. And then you can see Marcella Playground there. So clearly, no shadows would ever be cast onto the playground from this project. And a wind rose. You can see here that the, again, Marcella Playground here at the bottom, our site here, you can see the wind rose. The wind is predominantly, you know, towards, at least away from the park there. Ray, you're muted. Oh, I think Ray needs to be a co-host, perhaps.
Okay, there I am. I actually muted because there was some noise here in the office, but so this is a rendering of the plan. We made every effort to provide a lot of shade along the sidewalk. The sidewalk was actually too narrow to put street trees in for handicap accessibility, so we put the street trees on the southern part, facing Highland Street to provide some change, shade for the neighborhood. Next, please. Here's a photograph of the existing site. Next, please. Here's a close-up. Along the street, we have a lot of a lot of vegetation for the public, as well for the residents. There's a main entry patio to the east. Some lawn space behind the building, planting in front of retaining walls, and a patio area that's access for residents in the back. That's sort of a private, not a public amenity, but a private amenity. Next, please. So this is, we attempted to plant mostly native, native plant material. Some oaks and maples, red cedar. Some American elms that are disease-resistant, Dutch elm disease-resistant. And we intend to install them fairly large caliber at the beginning. There's a new putting stone wall along Highland Street. That wall varies in height. But the trees will be planted up on top of that wall. In the area in front of the entrance courtyard will be switchgrass planting to really highlight that entrance area. Next, please. So this is the existing putting stone wall. Not a great pointing job there, but we plan on, we're going to have some some ledge removed for this, for this project, which we plan to use a native stone to build a wall along the, along Highland Street. Next, please. This is the planting plan. The plant list, like I said, mostly natives. And a decent amount of tree cover along Highland Street. Sort of, sort of nice to, to, to work with Studio G on, on allowing us to really plant in front of their facade. But I think it'll really create a nice street presence and, of course, help with the adjacent seat of Marcella Playground. Next, please.
I think that's, I'm just going to speak to this real quick, Ray, just to cover a couple of other things that you didn't discuss. Would like to reiterate what Ray has noticed, noted here. Really, just about every opportunity for any type of planting along the street furniture has been taken. You know, the, it's, except for the access into the building. You know, a stair here, a ramp here, small stair here, and this is the driveway into the building, and then the cars park underneath the building. Except for those moments there where the site must meet the street. Everything else is planted. So it's very dense. And quite a change in what's there right now, which is basically a empty abandoned lot. But this concludes the material that we have for presentation today. And we'd like to, this is a view here from Highland Park, which is about 90 feet away there on the corner. We'd like to open it up for questions and comments from the commission.
Thank you for your presentation. I also want to call out that we were joined at the beginning of the presentation by Associate Commissioner David Quealy, who's also with us as well. Thank you for your presentation. I am very familiar with the site as we do a lot of programming over at Marcella Park, one of our most popular basketball courts in the city. Always activated with positive activation there. I want to compliment on the planting plan of adding trees. I think it would have been easy to walk away saying that the sidewalk's too narrow for ADA complacency to plant street trees, and you took that effort, effort to still build the buffer and create those plantings on the front of the building. So want to compliment that. Questions? Because one of my fellow commissioners that always asks this is not here this morning, so I feel like I should ask it in his place. In these units, will we be allowing pets at all? And if so, is that space out back available for a pet run or pet relief station? So all the owners is not on the park across the street?
I'll let you, Gabby or Steve, answer that question. Because I don't know the answer.
Gabby, I think you're muted. You can unmute.
There we go.
Thank you. Thank you. So we assume that the pets will be allowed here. And yes, there will be a space provided in the rear for those types of, for those type of uses.
Great. I'll defer to my other commissioners as I come up with additional questions. Would you guys mind taking the presentation down for a second, just so we can see the full view? Thank you. Questions from my fellow commissioners on this project on Highland Street?
I have a question. Can you talk a little bit more about the community path?
Yes, the community path was it is something that the neighbors desire during these, during this RFP process, when the city put, put this parcels of land for development. The neighborhood wanted a connection from Highland Street to Highland Park to facilitate or to help reduce the walk, the walking distances to the train station. And because of that, we have allocated a space to provide that connection. But that cannot, that won't be complete until the other city parcels are fully developed, right? There's a greater portion of that connection that is outside of our parcel. Until those are completed, this path won't be fully completed, but we have allocated the space for it. And it will be funded separately also. I mean, not it will come from different different buckets, but, but our, our client, John Rosinski, has planned to fund it, yes.
Thank you.
Could you show the diagram again, please, that identifies that connection? And what has to happen above the site? What's the nature of the property that's adjacent that you'd have to pass through? And I guess the status of redeveloping that parcel?
That was given to a different developer that would also be affordable housing, is my understanding. Yeah. But yeah, we're not the developers of those parcels.
Okay, so north, it looks like northeast of Marcella Street, that is city-owned land?
City-owned land, yes, and also across the street.
Okay, in a future development?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So at this point, there's not a sense of how long it will take to complete that path because of unknowns about future developers. Is that accurate?
That's accurate, yes.
I also want to echo Commissioner Woods' commendation around the trees. It's just nice to see some trees in that, that area adjacent to the park and help cool off that neighborhood, which historically has been pretty hot over time. So it's nice to start to change that. So thanks for doing that.
I saw in some of the notes, too, there's some community usage, maybe some art space and stuff in the building where non-residents would be able to use, too. How do people know that that's open to the public? Is there any sort of signage? Or is, you know, is there a lock on that door that you need to be buzzed in or something? Or is it open to the public to go into that public amenity space?
The, the, all the details of how people are going to be able to reserve that space has not been fleshed out yet until and I assume there will not be until there's more information of who are going to be the residents here, who are going to be part of the cooperative. This is going to be a limited equity cooperative. And once this group is brought on board, there'll be a coordination of how the space will be available. As they'll have a say on how it is all managed.
Yep, I understand. Thank you.
But I would just add to that, that it's, it's this portion, it's basically this corner here at the entry, right, Gabby?
Yes.
And it's very transparent. So when things are, you know, it'll, I think it's very activated. And if there is an activity going on there, it'll, it'll be, it'll be very welcoming and clear that, you know, it's a public type of thing.
My apologies. I thought it was an indoor space. I understand now. Thank you.
It will, it is, but it's glazed. You know, there's a lot of storefront there, so it's a very transparent corner of the entry process.
Sorry if I missed this. Can you talk a little bit about the price range of these units, what you expect it to be?
Well, the developer is not here right now, and I can't answer that question. But I can, what I can tell you is who are we expecting to serve, what income ranges? And that is 30% to 60% AMI.
Okay. Question, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
And that's 100% of the units.
That's correct. 100% affordable, yeah.
Thanks.
Right. Liza, do you have any more feedback on this project?
No, I don't. Thanks.
No. Okay. Saying that, we'll go to any public comment on this project at 273 Highland Street, which is adjacent to Marcella Park. Just please raise your virtual hand, and Carrie can make sure you're unmuted. I am not seeing any public comment on this topic. Confirming, no. Okay, back to the commissioners. Was there any other questions that anybody had or any motions or on this one?
Hi, I just had a question. I think we need to make sure, because that community has a lot of pet-friendly animals over there. So we need to make sure we can't just assume that that can be happening. So we definitely have to get clarification on that one. Thank you.
With that, I'm going to make a motion that we vote to approve the 273 Washington Street, which is adjacent to Marcella Playground in Roxbury. I think it's a thoughtful design. I think they're doing their part to come up with the community pathway, being mindful, adding trees in places where they didn't necessarily have to, to try to help cool down our heat islands. With that.
Second, yeah.
Second from Commissioner Ballinger. All in favor?
Excuse me, Commissioner Woods. Sorry, I'm not sure if Associate Commissioner Washington was asking for a proviso about the dog, I mean, about the pet recreation space. I wasn't.
Yeah, I already have a second on my motion, though, so.
Okay.
I'm going to take the vote.
Okay.
I think we did mention that there's going to be, that we asked if there's pet space in the back, and I said that would be the area that's intended. I don't know how much in our jurisdiction we have with that, other than, you know, trying to ask them to please be mindful and make that space available for their 23 residents there, so they have that release station, so. With that, Commissioner Ballinger? A vote?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Pierre?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Quealy?
Aye.
Commissioner Woods, aye. So passage unanimously. Thank you very much, and good luck with your project.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
With that, we'll let everybody reset, because we'll have a new group coming in. And Madam Secretary, if you could please introduce the second item on the agenda.
Sure, just one moment. Let me finish letting folks in. I see this, Olivia's, oh, Christine Wilson, and is John Harding joining your team? Oh, sorry, there you are, okay. And who is making the presentation?
I will be presenting the slide deck.
Okay. All right. Is everyone able to unmute? And are you able to present?
Let's see. Seems good.
Okay, so this is a vote to approve 127 Amory Street, which is adjacent to the southwest corridor and Amory Street Park in Roxbury.
So I think I can probably get us started. I'm John Harding. I'm the project manager with the developer, the community builders. The 127 Amory Street project is part of a master plan that is the 125 Amory Street Master Plan. It is the third phase of that master plan. And that's just an aerial screenshot, so I think Christine, we can go to the next line. All right, so here's the site plan. So you can see 127 Amory Street, sort of the top of this slide. As I said, it's the third phase. 125 Amory Street is near the bottom. That was a renovation of an existing project that was owned by the Boston Housing Authority that we did back in 2021. Holter Park was renovated by our partners, Urban Edge. All right, sorry, it's not renovated. It's a new construction building that was completed in 2022. As I said, 127 is the third phase, and the final phase that will happen after 127 is complete is 101 Amory Street, you can see off to the right. Some key pieces to notice on here is the Amory Street Park is shown at the bottom of the slide. That is currently under renovation, almost done. We should be pouring the final concrete this week. TCB, the community builders, took the lead on that renovation with some financial assistance from our partners in the area. There is a central green right in between 127 Amory and 125 that also functions as an outdoor green space and recreation space. And then finally, there's a linear greenway that we're planning to build towards the top of the screen. So to give you a little bit of bearings, right, that's right along the orange line tracks. And this entire master plan site is right between the Stony Brook and Jackson Square MBTA stations. Yeah, next slide. So community outreach, I'm going to go over this real quick. You don't need to go into each of the details. But there was a lot of community engagement involved in the original Article 80 process, which happened in 2018. Then we went through a notice of project change for 127 Amory Street in 2021. That did not significantly change any of the site plan. It really just changed the program inside of the building. So it went from about 75% market rate building to 100% affordable. So it is all rental affordable now. And then in addition, we had a community meeting where we met with residents, talked about what they wanted for the Amory Street Park renovation. That was back in 2020, so it's been a long time coming, but we got their feedback, and we're happy to, to be almost done with that renovation. Next slide. So this shows a breakdown of each of the phases of the project. So key takeaways here, the 127 Amory Street project, you can see it includes the central green, so that will be developed with this project. As I said, the Amory Street Park renovation is almost done. We are hoping to complete the greenway. So to give a little context, the greenway is designed to be a multi-use path that would connect from Atherton Street on the left and create a just really scenic, excellent, easy path, sort of mirroring the southwest corridor, connecting to Jackson Square MBTA Station. This is actually the second phase of that greenway. The first phase started construction. They had a groundbreaking two or three weeks ago, and it is just off this screen to the right. We are intending and hoping to build out this greenway with 127 Amory Street. However, it's primarily on MBTA land, and while we've had a lot of discussions with the MBTA, we don't have their final approval yet, so I can't guarantee that we'll be able to complete it with 127 Amory. If we don't get their approval in time, we will complete it before or along with 101 Amory Street. Other key considerations. So you'll notice we're also building out a new road alliance way along with the 127 Amory Street project. Lots of street trees, and I'll let Christine go into more of the design considerations for this project. But I should also mention that the current existing condition for this site is basically surface parking, pretty dilapidated surface parking, and some overgrown vegetation. Next slide. And then this is just sort of context on implications for the surrounding parks. So as you can see, the Parks Review for this project is really triggered by the master plan. So 125 Amory and 101 Amory are within 100 feet of the Amory Street Park. But the 127 Amory Street project is pretty far from both the southwest corridor and the Amory Street Park. So I don't anticipate that the construction activities on this site would have any adverse impacts on either of those parks. I think that's about it. I'll hand it off to Christine to talk through design.
Thank you, John. So Christine Wilson, landscape architect with Copley Wolf. Been working on this project since the beginning of the master plan process. We worked on the master plan with Icon Architecture. And this slide just shows the shadow studies, the shadows for March, June, and the next slide is, is September, December. But the gray is the existing building shadows, and the green is the new shadows. And what was very much taken into consideration with the building massing design while the new construction was not putting any new shadows on the Amory Street Park or the southwest corridor. So I'm going to walk us kind of chronologically through the different projects. So 125 Amory is the existing building. That was the first kind of project, that renovation that John mentioned. And as part of that renovation, And as part of that renovation of the building, we expanded the front entryway from a narrow kind of pathway up to the, the door to a small plaza for gathering out on the street. We also renovated the residence courtyard, um, that's uh, on the first level of the building, so you come in the building here, and it's on that first level, and I'll just mention that it is a, a kind of a story above um, the, the space behind. So that was the first project, and it was completed in twenty twenty-one, as John mentioned. Here are some um, just photos of that new plaza out on Amory Street um, that the residents really enjoy now. Then, moving on to the next project that was completed in twenty twenty-two, this is Holzer Park, and this plan is just rotated, so to orient you, this is Amory Street, so that plaza that I just showed is just up um, to the north, um, page north on here. This is that new street, the first new street, um, uh, and then a little piece of Alliance Way um, was built as part of this project. These uh, new streets um, follow the complete street guidelines um, of the city, really nice kind of furnishing zones with street trees and wider sidewalks, um, and, you know, planting, foundation planting along the building. We have small gathering areas, you know, with, with seating, a variety of seating opportunities at each of the building entries, and really nice new play area just off of um, Atherton Street. So, I moved to the next photo to show, actually a picture of that completed play area off of Atherton Street, as well as kind of that main entry um, for Holzer Park. Moving on to the next project, Amory Street Park, so this is now going to the complete opposite kind of corner of the whole master plan from that play area. Um, Amory Street Park is a Boston Parks property that TCB is renovating. Um, that was the one that John mentioned that met with the community um, back in twenty twenty, get their feedback. They really wanted the gazebo that's in this park preserved. And um, other renovations include uh, a new kind of accessible walkway, with next kind of fully accessible plaza, you know, expanded um, seating area under and around the gazebo. We've repurposed the, we're salvaging the, these granite blocks and resetting them, so they're actual seating um, elements, uh, they're had very low, um, as you can see in this uh, in this photo. Removing have this old water feature, just really kind of cleaning up the space, refurbishing the, the fence, adding new trees um, and uh, lighting, uh, we have some solar lights, really exciting um, for this project that are going in, um, the community wanted um, lighting improvements. So, as John mentioned, um, this project is almost complete, here are some photos just of construction this month, resetting those salvage blocks, um, and in the process of, of, of um, you know, cleaning up the, the gazebo. And then, moving um, to one twenty-seven Amory, um, this is uh, the kind of project that's behind one twenty-five uh, Amory, so this is that uh, renovated uh, residence courtyard I mentioned before, and um, where there's great, great changes, I mentioned, so a couple kind of big moves um, that are being made um, as part of this project is this big central walkway, this spine um, that's gonna connect from that, the Holzer Park entry, I showed you the photo a little earlier of that, um, from the Holzer Park entry across to the Pace Building and the eventual one oh one Amory Building. Um, and with lawn spaces off on either side of it, uh, adjusting the topography so that grade change between the residence courtyard and down below um, is not as, as dramatic, some really nice plantings up behind that lawn, um, some rain gardens and uh, really nice seating space and, and um, bike storage, kind of off of the kind of courtyard entry, um, community room, um, one twenty-seven. Um, we're continuing the, the streetscape work that was done as part of uh, the Holzer Park project over here, so finishing off Alliance Way, um, blue bike station, tabled intersections, you know, furnishing zone with trash receptacles and benches and lighting, et cetera, so uh, and street trees, of course. So, really excited for that project to begin construction. Here are some images of the architecture for one twenty-seven Amory, uh, some perspectives showing the, the character of that building designed by Icon, and some of those elevations of that building. And then here's some precedent images uh, of that central courtyard space. Uh, here's the perspective of it, um, just to see the kind of the scale of it. And um, this is not terribly exciting, but the planting plan, um, we have a native planting palette, um, so I can go through that in more detail, or kind of any other um, aspect of the, this project or the full master plan, if anyone has any questions, and I'll just end it on that.
Thank you, that concludes the presentation.
Oh, so, yeah, sorry, it does conclude, sorry, Ryan, yes.
No, no, no.
Commissioner Woods.
Yeah. Um, Liza and Carrie, just point a clarification before we go through, just because there's a lot of buildings here. What's under our purview for today is just the one twenty-seven Amory, correct? Because the other buildings were either renovations as of right to existing buildings or um, outside of the hundred-foot buffer, is that correct?
The Article eighty review of this project was for the entire project, it was after the Article eighty review was approved, the project was subdivided. And so we did see some projects, because they got triggered by either the southwest corridor. I, I guess this is the only one actually that gets triggered because of its approx, um, proximity to the southwest corridor. The one twenty-five Amory Building itself was a retrofit of an existing building, so that did not trigger our review.
Great. Uh, and for the commissioners, just so they know, um, Amory Street Park is a newer acquired parcel that we got from what was formerly uh, Department of Neighborhood Development, now Mayor's Office of Housing, transferred over, so a fairly new acquisition for us that obviously, as part of this project, is getting uh, renovation and maintenance, so uh, looking forward to that new and approved, newish and approved amenity uh, for the residents in the area. Um, can you touch on how many trees are being planted as part of the project?
You know, I don't have that off the um, top of my head, this rendering shows the, the tree, the number of trees. Um, this is the, the symbol of the new trees.
Okay, so. Really alive.
Hmm.
Same thing, pets, things of that situation, are pets going to be allowed in these buildings? Or will there be space made so the Amory Street Park and um, the DCR property aren't getting the brunt?
Yeah, we typically allow pets with limitations in our properties, and we expect that to be the same here. Um, I would expect that the central green would be the area that would be most easily accessible for one twenty-seven Amory residents.
Open up to other questions from the commissioners?
I had a quick question about um, how you're dealing with stormwater on site.
Uh, we have multiple stormwater retention systems under the new Alliance Way. Um, there's also one that goes under what's shown as parking, sort of right adjacent to one twenty-five Amory, I believe. Um, so there's significant amount of stormwater retention built in underground. Uh, additionally, there's the rain garden and all of the planting areas here, I'll also add this will be a substantial improvement to what the currency condition is, because currently it's almost all impervious surface.
Hmm. Hmm. Will you be using any um, horse pavements or, or pavers as part of this uh, mix of design?
Uh, definitely our plan for the greenway is permeable paving. Uh, or, like I said, that plan could potentially change, because the MBTA hasn't officially approved it yet. But that is the plan there, I, Christine, do you remember if the seating area has pavers in front of the?
You know, I don't remember if that was the permeable and, or not the final design here, but we have permeable pa- paving in, in kind of different areas of the site, like along Amory Street and the furnishing zone.
Thank you.
We have a rain garden next to, right next to that plaza, so any waterfalling on that would be directed right into the adjacent rain garden.
But most of the storage is underground, it seems like.
A lot of it's underground, yeah.
Okay.
I also believe the design in between the street trees, it's like right on not the sidewalk, but adjacent to the sidewalk is pavers. It's my memory.
Other questions from commissioners?
Yeah, a question, I think probably for, for John Harding, um, you were talking earlier in the presentation about the linear greenway and the status of that, and I understand um, it's uh, not completely understood at this point in time, when that'll go forward. Um, so, so two questions, um, you mentioned that if it can't go forward as part of this development of one twenty-seven Amory, it would go along with the, I think it was the building A, one oh one Amory Project, which would occur later. Uh, how much later is, is that contemplated to be developed?
Uh, my goal is to have it start construction basically as soon as one twenty-seven Amory is done. Um, my guess is I won't be able to hit that goal, but hopefully soon after. So the one twenty-seven Amory Project has about a, a slightly under two-year construction schedule, and we'd be hoping to start um, probably January, so give or take uh, twenty twenty-seven.
Okay.
Um, but the, the plan for the linear greenway, our current expectation, and I think it's a very realistic expectation, is that we would complete that work as sort of, along with the final phases of construction for one twenty-seventh, like when we're doing landscaping, so it would still be probably close to a year and a half out. Um, and I think that's plenty of time for us to go through the MBTA process, as long as they don't have any um, major sort of existential concerns, which I, I don't think so, because I have talked to uh, multiple key players at the MBTA that seem to be okay with our current design.
And what type of improvements, John, within that greenway, what actual improvements look like? Would it be pathways, tree plantings, what else, what else is on the table?
So it's uh, where you can see all the table, uh, crossings of Alliance Way, uh, it would be sort of entryways at each of those locations, and then a sort of meandering uh, linear bike and pedestrian path. Uh, the goal here, the MBTA was very concerned on the first phase of development for planting of any new trees right along their lines, and so the goal here is to have that path meander through existing trees, so that we cut down as little as possible, um, and are able to keep as much shade as possible.
So that area is currently predominantly wooded at, at present?
It is, I don't know if wooded is the right term, it is overgrown.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and you?
The, it's a mixture of, of trees and small shrubs, and it's, it's fairly easily accessible in the winter, uh, but right about now, it's just a mess.
Okay. Got it, so the intent is to connect to Atherton Street, and you mentioned that there's another greenway component, I guess it would be to the east on this, on this drawing, that's in development? And can you give an update on the status of that, and will there be a gap between the two, or will they connect directly in the upper right of this diagram?
They will connect directly, the uh, it, it will, the experience of using it once both are done, is that it is one continuous path with no obvious separation, right, the, the first phase uh, will have fewer trees, and so that'll be a separation, but from the past perspective, uh, you shouldn't be able to tell the difference. Uh, it is currently under construction, uh, they had a groundbreaking, like I said, probably two or three weeks ago, uh, I believe, so that, that first phase is the lead developer is one of our partners, JP NDC, Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Development Corporation. Um, so I'm not in the weeds on it, but I do know that the expectation is that it would be a, I believe, two or three-month construction schedule. Um, and I'll also add, while that is complete, but before the second phase, sort of our phase of the greenway is complete, you'll still be able to, that'll still be a huge amenity for residents in this area. You'll still be able to sort of walk up uh, the street just to the right of our site, uh, and connect into that greenway, so you won't have to go all the way around Amory Street to get to Jackson Square, and you'll be able to walk down theirs even before our greenway is complete.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Liza, any feedback uh, that we did not cover on this?
The only thing I wanted to reiterate um, is that in addition to the improvements at Amory, Amory Street Pro, Amory Street Park, um, the proponent um, will be providing daily maintenance, um, which you referenced, Ryan, but I think it's important to um, just acknowledge that it's a significant um, contribution going forward, and we'll codify that in an MOU with them. Um, parks will take on major repairs and, and uh, sort of unexpected uh, costs as they may arise with a new new facility, but they'll have the day-to-day, and that's it, thanks.
Our favorite kind of partnerships, thank you. But. Would you mind just taking the presentation down for a sec, sorry, it's hard to see?
Me, fine. There we go.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions from the commissioners before we go to any public comments on this project? Seeing none, uh, open this to public comment, if anybody would like to testify on um, one twenty-seven Amory Street, which is adjacent to the southwest corridor and Amory Street Park in Roxbury, just please raise your virtual hand and um, Carrie will try to unmute you. Not seeing any hands raised or public comment on this. Anything further, back to the commissioners for discussion or questions? Any motions?
Uh, motion to approve one twenty-seven Amory Street adjacent to Amory Street Park in Roxbury.
Perfect. There is uh, a motion on the floor from Commissioner Quealy, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ballinger, all in favor, um, I'll just do the, it's easier with the roll call vote, I guess, with the screen, so uh, Commissioner Ballinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Pierre?
Aye.
Commissioner Quealy?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington? See, if you're on mute, maybe?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, and Commissioner Woods is an aye as well, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much for your presentation, and uh, best of luck on your project.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. With that, we have no other business on our agenda for this month's meeting. Um, a little short of in the past couple months, so thank you everyone for joining, and can I have a motion um, to adjourn? So, I will make, thank you, second myself. With that, everybody have a nice rest of the week, thank you for joining us today.
Thank you all, thanks.
Bye, thank you.